We'll call a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for July 18, 2017, 4:30 PM. The order. First item on the agenda is your consent agenda items. What's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We've got a motion of second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? See none? On favor say aye.
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 Close note. Motion carries. Item 2A, consider motion approved issuance of a temporary on sale liquor license for Herman Monument Society.
I'll offer the motion to approve the issuance of the temporary on sale liquor license for the Herman Monument Society to sell alcohol at Herman Fest located at Herman Park, 101 North Garden Street and Herman Park, 14 Monument Street on Saturday, September 9th, 2017.
Second.
We've got a motion in the second. Any discussion? See none? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Close note. Motion carries. Item 2B, consider motion approved issuance of temporary on sale liquor permit for Morgan's owner and Daniel Parsley.
I'll offer the motion approving the issuance of the temporary on sale liquor permit for Morgan's owner and Daniel Parsley to serve alcohol at the wedding reception at the New Ulm Community Center, 600 North German Street, Saturday, September 9th, 2017.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion in the second. Any discussion? See none? On favor say aye.
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 Close note. Motion carries. Item 2C, consider motion approved issuance of a lawful gambling permit for the Wild Turkey Federation Longbeards Chapter conducting a raffle gambling at the New Ulm Country Club.
A motion to approve the issuance of lawful gambling permit for NWTF Der Deutsch Longbeards Chapter at 14586 County Road 102, New Ulm, Minnesota to conduct raffles gambling at the New Ulm Country Club on Golf Drive, New Ulm on Saturday, February 3, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? See none? On favor say aye.
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 Close note. Motion carries. Item 3A, consider authorizing the city manager to sign a purchase agreement and earnest money contract to purchase forty-nine point, excuse me, forty-three point nine-four acres of land from Schultz property for additional airport industrial park development land.
I'll offer the motion to authorize the city manager to sign the purchase agreement and earnest money contract for the forty-three point nine-four acres.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just a matter of clarification. The sellers on the property and councillor did not identify them, which was not necessary, which is fine because the land is currently held by three trusts. It's not really, these are individuals who have an interest in it. One of the people who have record is a trustee is actually deceased. I've been speaking with one of the trustees and we'll clarify who the owners are. If you direct the city to move forward with this, we'll make sure, of course, we have a good title and everything else. But I think as proposed, the resolution is just fine. Just wanted you to be aware of that.
Sure. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
I think because this is such a big ticket item, we should walk through this a little bit or have our city manager walk through this.
Right.
Mr. President and city councillors, the city council received a report this, in the last six months where we talked about, actually six months, probably 12 months, where we talked about the need for additional industrial park land. Some of that discussion occurred on the renewed projects. It was one of the proposed projects. It was ruled out as it was not an appropriate project for that funding source. And out of those discussions of needing industrial park, the city manager was instructed to identify lands that were available for sale that would be suitable for industrial park purposes. This forty-three point nine-four acres is located adjacent to the airport industrial park. It would be a natural extension of the utilities. It may, you know, require different stormwater holding ponds, but for most of it, it's, it's just an extension of the existing. It's, you know, it's in our comprehensive plan to be industrial park. It's in our zoning to be industrial park. In essence, we're planning on it to be an industrial park. So it made a logical extension. The price per acre was thirty-three thousand dollars an acre. Times forty-three point nine-four acres gets you to one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, four hundred and fifty thousand and twenty dollars. We've got the closings at honor before December 15 of 2017. And you see the breakdown that we're going to have two payments in, you know, in two years at the request of the seller. We've got eight hundred and five thousand and ten dollars in 2017 and six hundred and forty-five thousand and ten dollars in 2018. And I don't know if there's any other questions you might have.
Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Hipper was part of the drawer, or he was the person that drew up this agreement. So if you've got any specifics.
Does that closing date look realistic when you're dealing with trustees?
I think so. Again, the trustee I spoke with could probably do it sooner. I think it's their preference to do it towards the end of the year. And one of the trusts is the one that wanted the bulk of the payment deferred into 2018, right after the first of the year.
Okay.
For legitimate, you know, tax concerns. So there would be two payments, but at the time of closing, we would get a warranty deed conveying the title to the city for all the property. We would do the title work to make sure that everything was kosher on that and we're getting a good and marketable title. So it's just a matter of finalizing the terms of the purchase agreement. I would need to get verification to make sure we have the correct trustees signing that so that we know we have a binding agreement. I think one of them resides in California, but that's, we can do that through email. That's not a big issue.
Okay.
The actual deeds, we will need originals and we'll have them sign off on those.
Okay.
I guess I have a question for Brian. What's your intent for 2018? Would we rent this as farmland in 2018?
Yeah, I think we would continue to have it available should the need be there. We still have approximately twenty, I can't remember, twenty-two or?
Twenty-two acres out there.
Twenty-two acres that are available. So it's not like it absolutely positively has to be, you know, scraped off and streets put in because I don't think we want to do that. If somebody comes in and says, "I want to buy thirty acres and put up a big facility", we don't want all that infrastructure going away. So we would just rent it until the demand required us to develop it.
And, Mr. President, councillor Mack, I'm talking with the trustee. He indicated, he gave me the identity, the current tenant, indicated that there probably would be at least two farmers who'd be very interested in renting it until we would actually be selling off part of it. Any purchase agreement for a new buyer, we'd want to, we'll cover whatever the lease situation is to make sure that that's addressed, but it would produce some income.
Okay. I've got a proposed financing of the one point four million dollar acquisition. We have a land acquisition fund balance of, this, this actually goes back to last November. It might be a little bit different than that, but fairly close. Of four hundred and sixty-six thousand, we could use two hundred and eighty of that. The EDA repaid the city two hundred and sixty-eight thousand for the balance of that Milford Heights loan that the city had given the EDA. And we used two hundred and fifty thousand of that. The city revolving loan fund has about one point five million. We can use seven forty of that. And if, you know, we've got enough general fund reserves where we could draw off one hundred and eighty thousand off of, off of, off of our general fund reserves, that comes to one point four million dollars, the acquisition price. So the funds are available. We just have to pull them from the various accounts.
I know I'm not going to rehash the reason for purchasing this because we've discussed it quite at length, but it does move us forward. I've had massive amount of support for this. So I, I'm glad we're finally there. So, and my thanks to city staff as well for getting this and our city attorney for getting this done.
Any more discussion? See none? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Close note. Motion carries. Item 3B, consider acceptance of a bid from Thomas R. Zahn and Associates LLC for an update of the downtown preservation design guidelines.
One comment before I make the motion to approve. I mean, we worked with Tom Zahn before with our Heritage Preservation Commission in New Ulm with the drafts, the guidelines. He does have a heart for New Ulm. He'll do an excellent job for us. So I'll just motion to accept the bid from Thomas R. Zahn Associates LLC for the update of the downtown preservation design guidelines.
Second.
We've got a motion in the second. Any more discussion? Total amount is nine thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. On favor say aye.
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 Close note. Motion carries. Item 3C, consider the bid from the Minnesota Elevator for update on the interior of the elevator car. I would assume that's at City Hall here? Is that the one at City Hall, the elevator?
Yes.
Okay.
One comment I want to make on the, with the elevator car there. I know at the last meetings, the updates we had to do had to be done. The city budget is sixty thousand dollars for it. This one is just strictly the interior of the car, if I'm correct in reading this, the building official. I've stepped in the elevators today. I didn't see a whole lot wrong with them. My personal opinion, I'd rather see the city take that seventy-six hundred dollars, put it into carpeting or painting at City Hall or whatnot. In my own mind, the elevator's fine. It's certified. I just don't see the need for that update for cosmetic inside the elevator. That's my personal opinion.
And it's, my understanding is it doesn't get used much at all, right? Very limited use.
I use it every day.
Other than the mayor. Maybe we could term and call it the mayor's elevator.
Any more comment?
You could offer a motion to deny it then.
I guess, how did it come about again? Was it just because it was included or did we ask for that? Was it included on one bid? Is that how it came about?
I think I was asking for a second number to go off of when we were talking about it.
With the upgrades.
With the upgrades.
Things that we had to do.
Yeah.
That's also what I remember.
On that aspect. But, I mean, I also would support Dave's thoughts of putting the money into City Hall and the painting and carpeting.
It could be done in a future year as well.
It's just cosmetic.
It's just cosmetic.
It's strictly cosmetic.
It's a lot of cosmetics.
I'll see where it goes. I make a motion to deny the bid from Minnesota Elevator for the update of the interior of the elevator car in the amount of seven thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars.
I'll second.
We have a motion in the second. Any more discussion?
I would think if we do deny it, that we have city staff bring it back to us when it does look like it needs repair or updating. Maybe in a couple of years or whatever.
Yeah, are we missing anything? Is staff able to tell us? Is there something specific?
Want Ellen to chime in on any of this?
Is there something specific that?
Mr. Zalvila's here. He can.
Ellen.
The president councillors, yeah, there is nothing that's specifically designated in the, the upgrade. It's just an interior upgrade of the car. The only thing there really is looking at would probably be the carpet, which we can incorporate when, in future when we do carpet in City Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion to accept, deny the bid. Any more discussion?
To deny.
Huh?
To deny.
That's what I said, deny.
Yeah.
Said both.
Did I say accept and deny?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry about that. It's okay.
I was looking at it. I probably did. Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Close note. Motion carries. Item 4A, first reading of ordinance number seventeen dash zero one four, fifth series, amending chapter seven of the city code, city of New Ulm relative to regulating special vehicles. Mr. Hipper.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero one four, fifth series, city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, an ordinance regulating special vehicles. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of New Ulm, section one, that section, and we would be inserting the appropriate one. Of the city code of the city of New Ulm is hereby amended to add the following. Section blank, special vehicles, motorized golf carts, utility task vehicles, all terrain vehicles and mini trucks. No person, subdivision one, no person shall operate a motorized golf cart, utility task vehicle, all terrain vehicle or mini truck on city streets or alleys except pursuant to a permit as provided for herein or is otherwise authorized by other provisions of this city code or state statute. The permit does not authorize the applicant to operate such special vehicles on county, state or federal highways except as provided for herein. Subdivision two, every application for a permit shall be made on a form supplied by the city and shall contain all of the following information. A, the name, address and date of birth of the applicant. B, the model, name, make and year and number of the motorized golf cart, all terrain vehicle or mini truck. C, current driver's license. D, the type of special use vehicle to be operated, including make, model, year of manufacture and VIN or serial number. E, evidence of insurance complying with the provisions of Minstat Section 65B point forty-eight. F, other information as the city may require. Subdivision three, the permit fee shall be set forth in the ordinance establishing fees and charges adopted pursuant to section 2.99 of this code, as that ordinance may be amended from time to time. The recommended fee is fifty dollars. Subdivision four, permits shall be granted for a period of three years and may be renewed. Subdivision five, no permit shall be granted or renewed unless the following conditions are met. A, the applicant must demonstrate that he or she currently holds a valid Minnesota driver's license. B, the applicant must provide evidence of insurance and compliance with the provisions of Minnesota statutes concerning insurance coverage for the golf cart, utility task vehicle, all terrain vehicle or mini truck. C, the applicant must be at least sixteen years of age. Subdivision six, the holder of a permit under this section may operate a motorized golf cart, utility task vehicle, all terrain vehicle and a mini truck only on city streets and alleys, not county, state or federal highways except to cross at designated intersections. Subdivision seven, motorized golf carts, utility task vehicles and all terrain vehicles may only be operated on designated roadways from sunrise to sunset unless equipped with original equipment headlights, taillights and rear facing brake lights. They shall not be operated in inclement weather conditions or at any time when there is insufficient light to clearly see persons and vehicles on the roadway at a distance of five hundred feet. Subdivision eight, motorized golf carts shall display the slow moving vehicle emblem provided in Minstat Section 169 point zero four five, as it may be amended from time to time when operated on designated roadways. Persons under eighteen years of age who are operating or riding in a motorized golf cart on a city street or alley must wear a DOT approved helmet at all times. Subdivision nine, motorized golf carts, utility task vehicles, all terrain vehicles and mini trucks shall be equipped with a rear view mirror to provide the driver with adequate vision from behind as required by Minstat Section 169 point seven zero. Subdivision ten, the city may suspend or revoke a permit granted hereunder upon a finding that the holder thereof, A, has violated any of the provisions of this section or Minstat Chapter 169 as may be amended from time to time, or B, if there is evidence that the permit holder cannot safely operate the motorized golf cart, utility task vehicle, all terrain vehicle or mini truck on the designated roadways, or has failed to maintain a valid Minnesota driver's license. Subdivision eleven, the number of occupants in the golf cart, utility task vehicle, all terrain vehicle or mini truck may not exceed the design occupant load. Subdivision twelve, the maximum speed at which a motorized golf cart, utility task vehicle, all terrain vehicle or mini truck may be operated is twenty-five miles per hour. Subdivision thirteen, for the purpose of this section, the following definition shall apply unless the context clearly indicates or requires a different meaning. A, driver, the person driving and having physical control over the motorized golf cart, utility task vehicle, all terrain vehicle or mini truck and being the licensee. B, motorized golf cart, any vehicles designed by its manufacturer to carry golfers on a golf course. C, utility task vehicle, as defined by Minstat Section 169 oh four five, subdivision one three, a side-by-side four-wheel drive off-road vehicle that has four wheels is propelled by an internal combustion engine with a piston displacement capacity of twelve hundred cubic centimeters or less and has a total dry weight of one thousand eight hundred but less than two thousand six hundred pounds. D, mini truck, as defined in Minstat Section 169 zero one one, subdivision forty A, a motor vehicle that has four wheels is propelled by an electric motor with a rated power of seventy-five hundred watts or less or an internal combustion engine with a piston displacement capacity of six hundred sixty cubic centimeters or less, has a total dry weight of nine hundred to two thousand two hundred pounds, contains an enclosed cabin and a seat for the vehicle operator, commonly resembles a pickup truck or van, including a cargo area or bed located at the rear of the vehicle, and was not originally manufactured to meet federal motor vehicle safety standards required in motor vehicles in the Code of Federal Regulations Title 49, Section 571 point oh one, point one oh one to 571 point four oh four and successor requirements. A mini truck does not include a neighborhood electric vehicle or a medium speed electric vehicle is defined by Section 7311 or a motor vehicle that meets or exceeds the regulations in the Code of Federal Regulations Title 49, Section 571 point five zero zero, as it may be amended from time to time. E, all terrain vehicle is defined by Minstat Section 84 point nine two. Subdivision fourteen, authorized city staff may operate city-owned motorized ATVs, golf carts, utility vehicles and mini trucks without obtaining a permit within the city on city streets, sidewalks, trails, rights of way and public property when conducting city business. Subdivision fifteen, mini truck equipment requirements. A mini truck may be operated under permit on designated roadways if it is equipped with all of the following. A, at least two headlamps. B, at least two taillamps. C, front and rear turn signal lamps. D, an exterior mirror mounted on the driver's side of the vehicle and either an exterior mirror mounted on the passenger's side of the vehicle or an interior mirror. E, a windshield. F, a seatbelt for the driver and front passenger. G, a parking brake. Section two, the disordnance shall take effect and shall be enforced thirty days from and after its adoption, approval and publication.
Thank you.
So it is not in effect today, even though people are coming to City Hall already looking for permits. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
We are not open for business yet.
This is just the first reading. So, okay, thank you. Roger. Item four B, consider motion receiving and approving the draft of a preliminary offering statement regarding the five million five hundred and sixty thousand, general obligation utility revenue bond series 2017A and two million nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, general obligation permanent improvement revolving fund bond series 2017B.
I'll offer that motion.
Second.
We've got a motion in the second. Any more discussion? See none? On favor say aye.
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 Close note. Motion carries. Item four C, consider motion to confirming appointment of Thomas Romaine to the tree advisory commission.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Thank you, Tom Romaine.
On favor say aye.
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 Close note. Motion carries. Item four D, consider motion to confirm an appointment of Jeannie. Mayor, take over. How you spell the last, pronounce the last name?
I gotta find it.
Lady.
Lady.
Lady, to the Heritage Preservation Commission.
I'm on the, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. I didn't want to butcher it.
I'm on the Heritage Preservation Commission. I just want to make one comment that G. D. Lighty has served before where this did a fantastic job. She's been out for several years and is offered to come back to the HBC board. So I'll approve the confirmation of the appointment of Jeannie Lighty to the Heritage Preservation Commission to fill the unexpired term of John Nugusberg.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. On favor say aye.
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 Close note. Motion carries. Item four E, consider motion confirming the appointment of Dean Offenske to the Human Rights Commission.
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion?
With a thank you to Deanna Offenske.
On favor say aye.
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 Close note. Motion carries. Item four F, consider resolution approving MinDOT detour agreement number one zero two eight seven zero five. Steve, you have something on that one?
Mr. President, thank you. This is related to the Highway 1415 reconstruction project where they're going to replace two bridges and build another one along the fifteen fourteen corridor from Broadway on, along Seventh North to the Niccolat County side of the river. So in order to phase that project in, the, the state of Minnesota is requesting that they be allowed to use 20th South Street as a detour for approximately six hundred days beginning in April of 2018. And they're offering us approximately ninety-nine hundred dollars for that work. The roadway was overlaid probably about 10 years ago. It is of a ten-ton design. I do not have any concerns with the regard of, with regard to the traffic loading that they propose. So we should be okay. They will do normal maintenance and overlays if anything happens.
Steve, I guess I have a question for you in regards, did they take into consideration for the train if that would, you know, for backing up on County Road 37?
They have really no other choice.
I know, but I mean, I'm just saying, you know, we're going to put a lot of traffic on one end.
We had those discussions early on and I think the mayor was involved with that task force that they would try and communicate with the train and try and get them on a regular schedule, but those things are kind of hit and miss. So there will be some backups, yes.
It will be not fun. I, is that number negotiable at all? I just think that's an incredibly low amount.
Well, Mr. President, there's, there's two ways to calculate the, the payment according to state statute, and this is the one that gets us the most money. There's also an offer for us to hire a consultant to look at one other way. And by the time we pay a consultant, we're probably not going to recoup that. So the short answer is that there's no, there's no negotiation. The commissioner of transportation actually can take over the roadway without an agreement. So at least they agree they're going to fix any of that breaks.
I just think the wear and tear on that road, with all that traffic and all those semis, I just, I guess if there's not a lot we can do about it, man.
There's a lot of semis today. I can go back to a KEYC video when we had three semis going by on 14 while two were turning just in about a 20-second blurb. The guy thought I set it up, but I had no idea who trucks and what they were, what they were hauling. But it is a busy stretch of road. There is going to be one minor problem, I think, and that's going to be addressed whether it's by the city or by them, but Minnesota Street may be a small problem at Hy-Vee. Maybe it's a large problem, but I think that's going to be addressed somehow. Mr. President, I did mention that in my primary issues. So thank you, Mayor, for talking about that. I guess the other side of the coin is the state is proposing to put forty million dollars into two new bridges and reconstruction of a major corridor into the city. So it may not be a lot for the detour, but they are going to invest a good sum of money into New Ulm. And that was also negotiated. That's why we have two-lane bridges. One of them was four-lane or is presently four-lane, but it was negotiated to be two-lane bridges built so that they could be four lanes when and if the need arises that the traffic flow is such that we have a need for four lane. And we're finally, maybe, the way it looks to me, it finally looks to me like the intersection of 1415 won't be called a Y anymore. Why isn't it fixed for good? I think we've got it fixed. I think the serious accident problems will be almost nil. And I have to say almost nil because I want to be covered.
Being that the city engineer is okay with it. I mean, the state of Minnesota could have just said, "We're going to commandeer your coming into the city. We're not going to give you anything." I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving MinDOTs. I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving MinDOT's detour agreement number 1028705. Authorize the city manager and finance director to execute the agreement for and in behalf of the City of New Ulm.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See you none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Consular Fisher?
Yes.
Consular Mack?
Yes.
Consular Schultz?
Reluctant, yes.
Consular Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 4G. Consider resolution to accept occupational safety health administration safety grant in amount of $7,000.
I'll offer that resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See you none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Consular Fisher?
Yes.
Consular Mack?
Yes.
Consular Schultz?
Yes.
Consular Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 4H. Consider resolution to accept donations for the memorial to the New Ulm Public Library.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion?
There's a lot of donations.
Yes.
People are very generous.
And we appreciate them all, so Finance Director, please call a roll.
Consular Fisher?
Yes.
Consular Mack?
Yes.
Consular Schultz?
Yes.
Consular Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 4I. Consider resolution approving the request from Brad Retzlaff to waive the loan repayment agreement of the Small City Development Program. Should we have Dave talk about it?
You bet. This is.
Mr. Schnobick.
Mr. Schnobick's issue sheet, and he'll tell you all about why he's recommending that we waive the loan requirements.
Council, President Schmitz, members of the city council. City was a participant in the Small Cities Development Program from 2009 to 2011. Purpose of the program was to rehabilitate buildings in the downtown area, both residential and commercial. The city was required to adopt regulations, administrative regulations, for the program. And one of the requirements that we adopted was one that stated that if a property is sold, transferred, or otherwise conveyed during a 10-year time period that the loan existed for, that it had to be repaid immediately. The Mark W. Retzlaff Revocable Trust participated in the program for the Retzlaff Hardware Property. There has been a change in ownership there. Staff is recommending that this requirement be waived because the change in ownership is a simple transfer to other family members, and those family members have been longtime, you know, employees of the business. And so we think it's appropriate in this case.
Thank you. Any questions for Dave? See you none? Entertainer motion?
I'll offer a motion to approve with one condition, the request of Brad Retzlaff to waive the repayment requirements of the Small Cities Development Program.
Second.
I'm seeing initially it's talking about a resolution, then it's talking about a motion, so.
I agree.
Oh, yeah.
I would suggest a resolution.
Okay.
I'll offer a resolution with one condition, the request of Brad Retzlaff to waive the loan repayment requirements of the Small Cities Development Program.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See you none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Consular Fisher?
Yes.
Consular Mack?
Yes.
Consular Schultz?
Yes.
Consular Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 4J. Consider resolution to accept donations offered to the city for the Park and Recreation Department.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? $100 from Laura Reinhardt, $40 from Happy Trail Dogs Park, and $50 from Bryce Andry. No more discussion? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Consular Fisher?
Yes.
Consular Mack?
Yes.
Consular Schultz?
Yes.
Consular Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Letters will be mailed, letters of thank you will be mailed out in the morning.
Sounds great. Item 4K. Consider motion authorizing the conversion of a tennis courts into pickleball courts in Lincoln Park.
Mr. President, I was at the July 10 meeting of the Park and Rec Commission, and the unanimous we recommended approval. Before I do make a motion, though, I had to actually ask what pickleball courts are. I don't know if Tom Schmitz or Cheryl Corman want to come to the mic and tell the general public what these are.
I think they should give us a demonstration out here, too.
Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Department. President Schmitz and Consulars, you can come to the Vogel Fieldhouse in the Recreation Center any day of the week, Monday through Friday after lunch, and watch or participate in pickleball. Pickleball is kind of a miniature version of tennis that's used with a large ping-pong paddle and a wiffle ball. Can be played indoors or outdoors. And so we're recommending converting those tennis courts, two tennis courts at Lincoln Park, to six pickleball courts while we maintain the two tennis courts at Washington Park.
Was there any, anybody against it in the neighborhood, or any concerns by anyone?
We have not done a door-to-door knock around Lincoln Park, but I do plan to send them a letter to let them know that this is the plan.
Any more discussion?
So with that, I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? On favor say aye.
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 Close no? Motion carries.
Timeline, Tom, on that? I'm sorry, I was just gonna ask for the timeline on that, so people that are listening want to know.
We're hoping to get it completed before winter. This year is our plan.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Item 4L. Consider motion awarding the bid for the Playground Replacement Project in German Park to Weber Recreational Design Incorporated.
President Schmitz, again, I was at the July 10 meeting. Originally, it was actually tabled from the June meeting. Just a little more information was given to the board, and this time it came around. The open, it was actually a two-year budget process. They actually did a carryover from the '16 budget to '17, which council had approved. So I'll, motion to award the bid for the Playground Replacement Equipment Project in German Park to Weber Recreational Design Incorporated. Lowest bidder, meeting plans and specs in the amount of $222,791 and 94 cents.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. For the public, that's going to be similar to the one, I believe, up on Herman Heights with the rubberized mats and stuff.
Can you put your iPad on the screen? I would assume that would work.
Which also made the news, right?
It is pretty similar to the one up on Herman.
Yes, it's got the poured-in-place fall zone surfacing, the rubber surfacing.
Great, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
And install time, again, on this one is fall of this year or spring of next year, depending on. Where would this equip, the equipment that's there now, where would that go?
This is the final replacement of a 10-year plan of old playground equipment, and this present equipment at German Park is wooden. And so I'm not going to recommend that that be relocated in a municipal park in New Ulm. It's splintered and, you know, as a wooden, we don't have any wooden playgrounds anymore.
Okay, all right. I know somebody would ask, so.
Any more discussion? None? On favor say aye.
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 Close no? Motion carries. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
And with no more business, meeting adjourned.